And we are live. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I am with Dr. Ken Williams from the Orange County. Board of Education here to talk to us a little bit about schools and what's going on in uh in the county in regards to our health. Good afternoon, Dr. Ken Williams. How are you doing?
I'm doing fine, Mark. Uh it's it's good always to talk with you.
Okay, um it'll take ten or fifteen minutes for people to um ask some questions, but we um. We'll have this ready to go for uh replay. People can watch. So um I just go ahead and can you tell us a little what's going on with the schools, the closures and um the latest with health?
Okay, yeah. So last Friday, as uh we we talked about on Saturday's program. Orange County School Districts for the majority of of the districts decided to close down for a period of about two weeks. Uh this was at the suggestion of Governor Gavin Newsom, and I think that's a good idea. Um you know, part part of part of the whole process is that we have to really decrease the spread of this very infectious. Um virus that that we know has been around for about two decades now in the world. According to the World Health Organization. And so the best way to do it is to really isolate ourselves socially. And to do our best to stay out of large public venues or arenas. Uh where this virus is very quickly and easily spread. Uh so the schools were shut down and that leaves kind of a burden upon some family members, but. I think there's gonna be some type of um federal or or state of relief for those families that uh. Have to take off of work to take care of their children. That that would be a a big. Issue for those families where two parents are working outside their home. Um now, as far as academic endeavors, I I think it's a good time that uh parents get in involved and. In at least teaching and and guiding their their children through some academic type of work. Um depending upon their their grade and their age, you know, it could be as as easy as uh. Learning phonemic awareness and basic addition subtraction, all the way to uh a little bit about American history. And uh world history and how these epidemics have impacted us over the the lifetime of mankind. So um that's that's kind of an update. We have uh confirmed cases in the world, um Mark. About a hundred eighty-one thousand cases. Of those, uh we have about seven thousand deaths. So that that's roughly about five percent uh fatality rate. Most of those deaths have come um from the Hubei. Province there in China and near Wuhan where this outbreak started. We have uh we have about twenty-one hundred deaths in Italy and about eight hundred deaths in Iran. And then you you look at the other countries in in Europe, but that's where it's hardened hard hit.
Okay, I'm gonna do a screen share and um before the broadcast, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Williams had sent me a website. He wanted me to show you guys. So I'm gonna go ahead and. Show that website to the the viewers. So they're they're looking at it now and just refreshing it.
Yeah, so so we have um most of the cases obviously coming from China, but the the next most impacted country, Mark, is Italy. Uh with about twenty-eight thousand followed by Iran with about fifteen thousand cases, followed by Spain with almost ten thousand. And then Korea, Germany, France, and and we're down there about number ten with about forty-six hundred cases. Confirmed uh here in the United States, and that that will go up. Um and and that's why the President wisely introduced last week. Uh efforts to get us all to stay home, isolate ourselves, self-quarantine ourselves. And uh he has done a marvelous job. My only um thought, and and this may be more political, more. Uh so than the public health nature of our conversation this evening, but do you remember when um. The impeachment inquiries were occurring uh December and January? Do you remember? Do you remember all that?
Of course.
Yeah, yeah. And so what what was happening is uh the first case of the coronavirus was identified December thirty-first. And through the next two weeks, we started seeing the epidemic uh increase by um. Quite a significant uh there there were uh originally only forty-four cases identified. In in uh China, then they didn't know the cause of these deaths. Uh it was a type of um uh of a coronavirus that was later identified on on January twelfth in China actually. Identified and shared the genetic sequence with the World Health Organization. So during all of this time that this epidemic was occurring, guess what the Democrats were doing in Washington DC?
Go ahead.
Yeah, they 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 were playing with the President. There there was a scam impeachment based upon uh sham. Evidence, no evidence, and what what happened is that distracted the that that little game, the the political game that the Democrats played. Distracted and hurt the health and well-being of of our country, and I let's go on to say it affected the the world. But definitely it affected this country because um our good President Trump had to defend himself and was actively engaged in this impeachment trial. When all of this was beginning. So it you know, it's it's terrible, the games that are being played in Washington DC. Because they, as we now see, they do have significant health consequences.
Okay, um as you know, my wife who is a nurse um type up a question for you. Um cuz you know, we keep seeing the news, the same things over and over. You know, you stay clean, you do this, you do that. I'll go ahead and read her question for you. It said, can you talk about cytokine storm and what the relevance is to COVID nineteen patients? There were some patients that survived the virus and mentioned about drugs. Doctors gave them like arthritis drug called Acterma. And that helped them. Can you talk about why France's health authorities advise people who are positive for the virus? To not take anti-inflammatory drugs like ibuprofen, et cetera?
So um rather, great question. Only a nurse could think of it. Um so so generally cytokines are a large group of proteins are in our body and they're secreted by the immune system. And these uh these proteins called cytokines, they they act as what we call signaling molecules. And they signal the immunity system, they regulate it, um they also regulate inflammation. And uh something we call hematopoiesis, which is a creation of a red blood cell. And so these are a broad range of cells. Uh immune cells, lymphocytes, and um they they help in stabilizing inflammation. Um what happens with this virus? Is in some individuals, it turns on this inflammatory response. And it kind of puts it into an overdrive. So the the cytokine storm. Um is just an overdriven, overstimulated uh immune system of the affected individual or patient. And they they have an acceleration and a more severe manifestation of of this virus. Uh the the you know, if if we look at what's happening, we have like seven different coronaviruses, right? So uh the seven coronavirus uh four of them are in our population. And are a part of the environment out there, and we we have all had colds and 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 upper respiratory. Uh the um disorders uh with the coronavirus, and they frequently lead to uh a complete recovery. In about seven days, but with a particular type, there's three subtypes of these coronaviruses. Uh what they call severe problems. Um and and we know like twenty years ago, when we when we had. Um the the SARS, I don't know if you remember that. We had the the SARS that um started in about uh two thousand and three. And uh we we didn't know very much about it at the time, you know, it affected about twenty-six countries, and we had about uh eight thousand cases. At that time, but a lot of people died from it, and and we found out later it was a uh a coronavirus. And and then we had the MERS, which um originated from the Middle East, from the Saudi Arabia. That was in two thousand and twelve. And uh they had very similar symptoms, and later it was it was finally isolated that these were uh coronaviruses, the more virulent strain. Um and it caused uh kind of like a SARS, a severe acute respiratory syndrome. So so the these uh viruses have been around for a while. They originate from animals. And they're and they remain in the in these animals as a host, and then somehow humans are exposed to it. And there's that transmission that occurs, and it's very easily transmitted from human being to human being. So so that's kind of a background, and so then we get this the cytokine storm that your wife uh brilliantly brings out. Uh because there are some medications that we use for the the these uh autoimmune disorders. Uh that that helps to reduce them, and uh some people are feeling that, you know, we should be using these for the more severe cases. Uh of these um coronavirus-like illnesses. Remember coronavirus, it could it it could burn itself out, and most of the time it does. Um and and patients do very well and and they recover uh and go back to normal lives. But those who are immunocompromised or elderly, we have to be very careful about them because their immune systems are not healthy.
Okay, I have a of a question. Um you were at one point, you said uh previously you were um a pediatric doctor for over. Twenty years. I actually have two questions. Um first, leading up to the one about the pediatrics. Is it um? And you know, in your opinion, is it a matter of just when and not if for most of us that will get this? Or is it um, you know, something we can stop?
Yeah, great, great question. And um yes, uh we we most of us will not get this. Most of us will. Not have contact with with this virus, especially now with this this fourteen-day isolation, self-quarantine. So so we should be protecting ourselves for for that from that. But uh as I shared earlier, this coronavirus, there's different subtypes and you know, there's alpha, beta, delta, and gamma. And there's all these sequencing and all these ge- genetic uh sequencing that defines a particular virus. And it, you know, I'm not a viro- virologist. Um my original training was in primary care, so yes, I did do a little. Uh uh ped- uh pediatrics uh for for about twenty years of my professional career as a physician.
Okay, so leading on to my question about the the pediatric question, because um this is being um. Streamed to the Irvine Moms page, has about seven thousand followers and they um are very active. Um and I just wanted to bring to the fact that you were a pediatric doctor for twenty years. What can we do to protect our kids? I know that um the media is telling us this only affects older people. Um do you know of any children that have been killed from this virus? Um and if so, I mean, if there's anything we could take, the extra precautions, take care of our kids?
Yeah, well, well, that's a a great question too, because the Children's Hospital has been taking an active role. And they've been working very closely with the Orange County Department of of Education. And um they're at Children's Hospital, uh where I happen to be on staff still. Uh we we do have a command center that's operational um at at twenty-four hours a day, and I can give those phone numbers if anyone wants it. But uh certainly Chalk Hospital is ready and willing to be involved in our pediatric community's healthcare. During the next two weeks if any symptoms um arise. Now, uh again, common sense prevails. We don't need panic about this because most of us will never be exposed to it, and if we're exposed to it, we if we're um healthy. And we have good intact and strong immune systems, we should do fine. Um but uh if there is any problems where someone is symptomatic, they're having shortness of breath. Or the the fever does not abate or resolve in two to three days, those are the patients that should go and get tested. And when they go, ma- make sure that you have a mask on and the emergency rooms are beefing up. Their staff, their security for uh this pandemic.
Okay. Um a lot of people understand you you do serve on the Orange County Board of Education. Um are you getting any updates? Or if so, how often from the county um through the as your elected position as a school board member of the county?
Right, so uh Dr. Harris as a superintendent um has a role throughout the entire county. Um bo- both in a figurative sense and in a li- literal sense. Um yeah, and he's sort of acting uh as his own independent. Uh publicly elected official, working with the county health and the local hospitals and the local school districts. And he made a good call uh unilaterally uh wi- with conjunction with the school districts to get involved in. And call for this ban. I I think it's a good decision. I support that decision. Again, as as you heard my comments. Uh earlier in this program, um wh- when you look at the politics of what's happened here, we we probably should have called. Uh for this drastic measure uh a lot earlier, but we were so focused on this impeachment and and this fake scam. Um uh event that was happening in Washington DC that it took our eyes off the ball, took our eyes off. Serious problem here, which is the health and well-being of the people of America. And that's what happens when you play politics. Uh at that level, and there's and again, as as the history shows, it was nothing but lies, misleading information. And it hurt the American people. As I think I I mentioned, I I believe this should have been called a lot sooner. Um but but you know, it takes time for these things to develop, to develop a consensus. But I think looking back on it, you know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, right?
Okay, um oh, I agree. Um can we um ask a couple more questions before you go?
Absolutely.
My wife, who is a nurse, she um she she asked um kind of circling back so we can put on the screen for people to read. In um real time. Can you talk about why France's health authorities advised people who are positive for this virus not to take anti-inflammatory drugs like ibuprofen?
So the there so ibuprofen is an anti-inflammatory. And uh there is no consensus on what's happening. There's some people uh who feel that. By taking this medication could exacerbate the symptoms uh of the more significant, serious up uh lower respiratory symptoms. Um yeah, but but that's not uh again, a consensus by all uh healthcare providers. Uh you know, the the question is, can we use something even stronger than Motrin, like a prednisone medication? Will that be of any value? Or should we go with these other immunoblocking or immunomodulating medications that like they use for psoriasis and rheumatoid arthritis? So um I I don't I don't think there's a clear consensus on on what we should we should do, whether or not we use anti-inflammatories. Um so so that remains unknown.
Okay. All right, um so we've been going for about fifteen minutes now. Um I thought we'd have more questions. Um can you um kind of talk about the other question we had? I'm gonna put it up on the screen. My wife went ahead and typed it out. A little bit um kind of circling back about the cytokine storm and the relevance to the COVID nineteen patients.
Yeah, so um a- as I as I shared with you, um there there's there's some thinking and some thought. That um you know, that we we shouldn't be using these anti-inflammatory medications. Like Motrin or Naprisen or aspirin, because it it may have a negative untoward effect. On these patients who are infected with with the um the virus. So um I I don't think there's any any clear consensus on it. Um why did France say that? Well, France says a lot of different things that we don't do here in America. The French people are very different, their their style of medicine, their uh approach to medical care is very different than. Than what we have here in America. So um that would be my best response to that question.
Um can you speculate at all when the schools will be open? I know in Irvine, they um there's they're talking that uh they're gonna be open again in um. April sixth. Um can you best guess on your opinion on that?
Yeah, well, um I think that's the the targeted date that they would open up. Uh will that happen? Well, that's gonna depend upon the response to the self-quarantine. That uh we as people are initiating uh starting today. So uh you know, if we get back together about a week from now. We'll see uh about these cases, and we'll go back to the John Hopkins website here, and we'll see how many cases there are. Um there are again, a hundred eighty-one thousand confirmed. Total deaths is about five percent or about seventy-one hundred.
Yeah, I can read off, I'll read off the website right now, the official toll, I'll refresh it. Before, when we were planning this, it was uh before some people died since then. It's seven thousand one hundred and forty-five. It just went up by six people, just reported. Um wow, that is uh disturbing. Um so Kathy.
Very, very, very lent organism. That that's why we need to uh isolate ourselves. And uh just uh be be aware of any upper respiratory symptoms. Again, most people. Uh some people don't even know that they have uh the virus present. They they're completely asymptomatic. But they're shedding it, they test positive. So so that tells me um that there's many different aspects to this. That we just don't know at this time. Um so.
Yeah, we have a question from Kathy Allen. Uh is it okay if uh we ask that? I'll go ahead and read it to you.
Sure, yeah, I'm I'm not looking at Facebook.
Okay, I'm just putting it on my screen. Kathy Allen asks, the President says, if you aren't sick, don't get tested. But wouldn't it help if the tests were available to all to see how widespread the virus is in our communities? And what about helping families to know if one of them is infected, so that member can be ice, can isolate themselves?
Well, well, that's a a great question, Kathy, and what I would say to that is we just don't have enough test kits for the entire population of the United States. Um i- it's not like you can go to uh Walgreens or CVS and and pick up a test kit. Uh we're we're lucky to have. Uh these diagnostic tests available, and I'm sure the US manufacturing and pharmaceutical industry is is ramping up as fast as it can. To make these diagnostic tests available. You know, supposedly, we're gonna be having drive-in or drive-through testing. Uh but I I would say to Kathy that um again, don't panic. Use common sense and discretion. Uh if if your family is asymptomatic and they're not having any. Uh shortness of breath or fever or any signs of a lower respiratory infection, they should be fine. They're probably not infected. And keep calm. That's the most important uh on um. Parti- that that is so important. I I cannot under or overemphasize enough. Stay calm.
Okay, Kathy also asked a follow-up question, which uh maybe I can put in perspective. I guess she's more, I'll read it in a second. The way I look at it is. You know, kind of how do we triage this? There's only so many test kits available. Um as you know, military person before, you only. You know, you only got so much resources and where do you place them? So Kathy Allen asks, who should get tested and why? Why aren't we doing testing like South Korea has done?
Well, um gr- great question. I I'm not in South Korea, so I don't know what uh advanced science or diagnostic testing they have. I I don't, I know South Korea, they're they're good folk and and they're uh very scientifically up to date and modern. Um I I would say that in America, uh we're we're doing our best to get those tests available. If you look at um uh like I received a uh little information in the email from Quest and Labport, they said that if you wanna be. Uh starting to to do any diagnostic tests, that uh it is available through them. So if you look at all the private. Uh efforts that are being done, we we do have the availability to do diagnostic testing for the this virus. So it is out there. You know, we we were so totally unprepared for this um epidemic slash pandemic, Mark. That that that's the scary thing about it, and and everyone panicked. I mean, everyone knows you go to the store now, you can't buy any. Toilet paper or anything that could uh clean off any antibacterial uh uh gels. Uh and 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 all the food's gone. I mean, that that is a a a mode of um an expression of panic and anxiety. Uh and and we 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 have to be better than that.
I wanna thank, I wanna thank you also as an elected representative. A lot of electeds right now aren't doing this, and you have been so open to us. To answer your phone and sit here now going on, you know, close to thirty minutes talking to us. I really appreciate that. And I know a lot of people um have told me they really like hearing you speak and what you have to say, and you you have a calming effect. I really appreciate that you're doing this.
Oh, you're very kind. You're very kind.
Yeah, I um, yeah, I joke my family, um they don't always watch my live streams, but when you were on, the first time I um, when I was at your home. And we had you down for for a couple hours, sit and talk about the schools and everything and and health. Uh my my wife listened to the entire thing. She said he was very interesting. And um of course, she's gonna listen, has to do something with her children, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, the most the most precious and important um parts to us as parents are our children. And you know, as parents, we do anything to defend them, we'll do anything to protect them and to treat them. You know, that's what we are. We're we're mommy and daddy bear or mommy bears. And and that's why moms and dads are so important for protecting their children, because the children can't protect themselves. They don't have enough information to process. And protect themselves, so we have to do it ourselves.
And uh we don't mind, just take one second. I just noticed a lot of people joined us and they're watching us, and if you just joined us, we're talking to Dr. Ken Williams. Um OC Board of Education, um surgeon, board certified, and also the history of her twenty years in pediatric found medicine. Then and doctor, they are actually looking at your um chalk profile now, where it shows that you used to work at Chalk Hospital Private Practice. And um I just wanna do another intro for the people that are joining us live and trying to get the most out of this while we have you on the line.
Sure, yeah, I've been active on uh Chalk's medical staff. I've been in private practice now for thirty-four years. I've been. Oh, boy, on staff there for thirty years, um a long, long, long time, and though and although I'm not actively doing pediatrics. Um uh you you know, it's kind of like riding a bike and 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 chewing bubble gum. I mean, you just never forget those type of things. I- if I can use that um uh that that uh small little allegory in comparison. Yeah, I mean, you 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 understand and you do basic pediatrics, you you know how to diagnose. Uh an ear infection, pneumonia, sinus, um and and then you come to that case, as I remember doing pediatrics. I I did a lot of training at uh Children's Hospital in UC Irvine and uh Children's Hospital of Los Angeles. Uh there's those cases where you come upon a child and nothing fits the textbook definition, and the and the kid looks sick and it looks septic. And those are the kids that need to be in the emergency room. They need to be admitted to to an inpatient status where they can get the the specialist care. Uh you know, God bless the primary care pediatricians and primary care physicians that are out there. You know, we're slowly being replaced. And we're we're like dinosaurs nowadays, uh but we we're the heart and the soul of the community, taking care of our kids. And um we we can have another conversation about what happened to private medicine another time.
Okay, well, I just wanted to let everybody know that you are a real-life medical doctor and surgeon and have a history in pediatrics. Oftentimes in my line of work, I meet people that are PhD doctors, and it's quite confusing, and I just wanna know, you're one of the few medical doctors that I know. And in the times like this, we really appreciate your dedication um to a lifetime of medicine and caring for others. And um I just wanted to focus on that today and your willingness and openness. Um I posted many places today to get this, the word out, that this is not gonna be political. This is just a time for people to to see they're elected on the. The County Board of Education who also happens to be a gifted doctor, so.
Um you're always very kind, very gracious and and charitable with your words. Thank you, Mark.
Okay, I just wanna try to keep on the line for another couple minutes to give um a chance for people to ask questions, but I know that a lot of people are just tuning in. Because they wanna hear you just speak about what's going on. Um is there any hope? Uh you know, like you said, don't panic, calm, stay calm. We're gonna be okay.
Yeah, and and that's a great point too, Mark, because uh we really have to give hope to people. We have to give calmness to people. Uh to parents and to the populace out there. You know, we're one community and we're one people. And we live such in a divisive time and place and age, and and may- maybe this is what the way. The good Lord above, the way God is gonna bring us together by fighting this 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 pandemic, this epidemic of. Of this terrible virus that has the ability to go across all political lines, all ethnic lines. Um oh, it 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 doesn't matter who you are, what you are, what color, where you hail from, you know, this is a virus that does not discriminate. Uh and it will kill us, and it will take lives if we don't use precaution and we don't care what and uh for one another. So we gotta, we gotta be be caring, we gotta be thoughtful, and and we just can't let it take advantage of of our uh of the bad nature. We have to let the good angels in in our lives guide us.
I appreciate you saying that, Dr. Ken Williams. Um I'm sure that um that helps a lot of people. Um. I'm sorry, my son was um yelling in the background. Um obviously, I'm in my home studio with my family. Um we haven't gone out much at all. So sorry to interrupt you like that. Um.
And have you gotten to watch some really good family videos?
Actually, yeah, we've um, well, we're pretty much calm people. We um, you know, I I go out sometimes, but uh. Yeah, some, we've watched some uh from some movies, kind of Netflix, just relaxing, and there's been some um changes at my wife's hospital. She said they're um doing some changes with the surgeries and stuff. She didn't get too much into it. Um of course, I'm not.
What what hospital does she work at, Mark?
She um works in the operating room in uh Kaiser in Irvine.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So um you know, St. St. Joe's and Hope are doing the same thing.
Yeah, she wants to, she wants me to tell you that they uh canceled elective surgeries at her hospital.
Right, right, yeah, that's that's what's going. Uh well, I'm on staff at Hope Hospital in St. Joseph's, and we just got. Communications today via the email that they're doing the same thing. Ba- basically, the hospitals are gearing up for a a major epidemic here. Where most peo- a lot of more people are gonna be coming in to the hospital for advanced medical care, perhaps even. Uh they may go into respiratory. Perhaps even, they may go into respiratory failure where they need to be hooked up to a respirator and have, you know, care within the intensive care unit. I mean, that's what they're ramping up for. They're looking at worst-case scenarios. They're working hard, the good people at Hogue and St. Joseph's and like your wife's employer there, Kaiser. We're all working hard.
Okay, Eve Frisk wants to comment. My wife reminded me to show the comment to the viewers. So I'm gonna go and read that to you here. As people are starting to show up, we're getting these questions from the community for you. Eve Frisk comments, and it's a question. Sadly, I saw too many school-aged children playing together in a group today and not self-isolating. What advice can you share with those parents that are having children go out and play with friends in groups?
Great question, yeah, that's the whole focus upon this quarantine for 14 days. We don't go into groups or be exposed in large groups. You know, we talk about 16 as being a perimeter around us that we should not be around other people. So if these kids are potentially with each other, I mean, potentially they're spreading the virus. Remember this virus, you don't have to be symptomatic before you begin to spread it. It's called the prodromal phase where oftentimes the patients are asymptomatic. They don't know they have it, but yet they're shedding the virus. So if something, yeah, if you're a parent, you want to guard your kid from being around other kids. So that's the whole purpose of this 14 days of self-quarantine.
I guess maybe as a parent, you can give us some advice on how to keep kids busy as well. I know you are, you're a father as well.
Yeah, yeah, I raised three incredible young men. I have eight grandchildren. It's, yeah, it's tough being a parent.
You look a lot younger than that.
Well, I started young and my kids started young and they've been busy. So I'm blessed to have eight grandkids, old between six months and like seven years. So it's been a busy time. But yeah, raising kids, it's hard. Parenting isn't for cowards. You know, James Dobson, that world-renowned child psychologist said parenting is hard. It's not easy and it does take a lot of sacrifice. And when your child is up and sick, you're invested emotionally in that wellbeing of your child and you cry when they're sick. You feel their pain, you do what it takes to take care of them. I mean, that's our calling as mothers and fathers.
Yeah.
Take care of those innocent children.
Yeah, it's, this is unreal to see. I just updated the website as you were talking a second ago and another death was reported. So this is, yeah. Yeah, it's the website you sent me that you wanted us to show in real time. So yeah, this is tough times and I'll share that, you know, my wife and I want more children. But we're afraid of health. That's something that we're concerned of.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't want to invalidate any of your fears. Certainly, we have a lot of concerns as parents, as citizens. We want this country to be successful. We want everyone to be healthy. We want everybody to prosper. I mean, that is, the way Americans came to each other, to help each other when this nation was founded 200 years ago. I mean, we came together as people.
Dr. Williams, we have another comment. I'm not sure if you're aware, this just happened a couple hours ago. I got the text message. Ricky comments, "South Coast Plaza is shut down for 14 days and then San Fran lockdown. And then had a feeling OC is next, be prepared." Are you aware that South Coast Plaza was shut down and they had someone test positive?
No, that would be something I'm not aware of.
Yeah, it just came out in the last couple of hours.
It did, yeah, no, well, that tells you about being in public places that the virus is there. It is present. And again, that's why it's so important to do this quarantine here, so.
Well, I appreciate you, Doctor, coming on. I've kept you for 30 minutes from your work. Can we check back in with you another 48 hours? Is that in?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Let's get together and let's talk and let's see how this pandemic or this epidemic evolves over the next few days here. And I'll try and find out about that death in South Coast Plaza.
Oh, no, it wasn't a death. It was just someone tested positive.
Oh, someone tested positive.
They shut down South Coast Plaza for a couple of weeks, a major mall.
I see, I see.
It was one of the employees that tested positive. That was what the OC register reported just a couple of hours ago.
Okay. Again, don't panic, people.
Okay.
Just because you're exposed, it doesn't mean you're going to get it. But you have to do everything you can to self-quarantine. So if you went to South Coast Plaza, please self-quarantine.
And I do appreciate your willingness to come on livestream and ask, answer questions directly from constituents. I personally greatly appreciate you, Doctor.
Oh, no problem, Mark. My pleasure. We'll get together in a couple of days.
Okay, thank you much, Doctor. Appreciate it.
Okay, God bless you. Bye-bye.
Well, thank you, Dr. Williams. Unfortunately, I'm just getting a couple of questions now that I wasn't able to answer. One was, "Does he think OC will be the next lockdown?" And then Ricky commented exactly, it was an employee at Nordstrom's. So, you know, I don't know if that to be a factor too, but Rick, it might be. So anyway, I don't want to talk about anything else. I promised you guys that we would talk to Dr. Ken Williams and that's what we did. And we'll have him on another two to three days. I have a livestream with Huntington Beach City Council Wednesday with Michael Posey. However, I think that might be canceled because that was an in-person. We might do another one of these things, so I'm unsure. I have, we have another interview later this evening with another politician, but I'm not going to discuss that. This was simply no politics. I just wanted to deliver just the facts from, from a doctor and an elected that's currently serving on the County Board of Education. So really appreciate you guys joining us and I'll keep you guys updated the best I can as I broadcast from my home studio. So thank you, guys. I really appreciate everything. Take care.